Fiscal year budget. This is a lengthy process. Though the COVID-19 pandemic has altered the way we do things, we remain steadfast in our commitment to engaging with all format for this evening. First, Mayor Bronin will be allotted time to speak on his proposed budget. After he is done, we will open the floor for public comment. We will end the meeting with closing remarks. We have several residents who have signed up tonight, and everyone will be given three minutes. I will provide additional details once we begin the public comment portion of this hearing. Now, I would like to recognize our mayor, Luke Bronin. Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Council President Rosado, and good evening to all members of the city council and all members of city government and all residents in the City of Hartford who are watching tonight. Thank you so much for taking the time. I know we all wish that we were back in Buckley doing this in person as we would in any normal year, but as the time, and I hope that everyone is doing well, staying home and staying healthy. I have a few messages that I wanted to share, but I'll hold those to the end of the budget presentation. Just some brief important public service announcements. And, Council President, I hope you don't mind. They'll be very brief, but I think they're important to share. But first, let me get to the business at hand this evening, which is providing a summary and overview of the recommended fiscal year 2021 budget. That's the budget that carries us through from this coming July 1 to June 30 of 2021. As you know, we are in truly uncertain and unprecedented times, but we've done our best to put a responsible and thoughtful budget forward, and I'll do my best to hit the highlights tonight. I also look forward to the public comments that more meetings and hearings and a great deal of process to come before the budget is finally adopted. With that, I'm going to try to share, and hopefully I'll succeed in sharing for the public, the PowerPoint presentation. And it should now be up. I hope that everybody can see that. I'm getting some thumbs up from the video, so I'm glad to start with a brief look back at what we've done over the last few years and look ahead. As you all know very well, over the last few years, we fought hard to take our city from a place of deep fiscal crisis to a place of at least fragile stability and lay out a long-term path for sustainability for our city. And I think while we have always known we have much more work to do and needed to stay disciplined and still had many tough decisions, we had begun to see some growth and a level of investment and energy that we haven't seen in a long time. We're determined to get back to that as quickly as possible and not let this pandemic interrupt that momentum. But it has to be acknowledged that we are right now facing a test of an entirely different kind. And we now have to address that as openly, as honestly, as transparently as we have our prior challenges. We don't know how long the pandemic is going to last. We don't know when it will pass us by. We don't know when we will return to normal. We don't know what the new normal will look like. A few highlights about the budget proposal. In the shortest terms, it's pretty much a status quo budget proposal. It is very similar to last year's budget. There is no increase in the property tax or mill rate. There is no new long-term borrowing. We continue to fund our capital expenditures out of our operating dollars, and we've been doing that for a number of years as part of our long-term sustainability plan. There's no one-time revenues here. We're not relying There are also no big service cuts and no big service increases. In general, there's no big cuts and no big increases. As you all know, we had to cut pretty deep over the last few years, and we have all had to work hard to so deeply that it impairs our ability to deliver our fundamental responsibilities. But we are in a time even more this year. Overall, the budget reduces spending by 1% over last capital investment. As I just mentioned, our capital investment is right now not coming from long-term borrowing, but coming from our operating dollars. And we scale back those operating dollars, that operating dollar investment into our capital investment this year. We are still doing our best to maintain our infrastructure to meet critical needs, and our operating dollars are not the only investments we make in our infrastructure. We have other sources of funding, for example, some capital reserve that we have set aside as part of our sustainability plan, state grant reimbursements that we get for old-school projects. A little bit more modest than we were hoping to do this year. The past few years to find efficiencies and find savings, and we've done our best to reflect those savings in this budget. In our budget, we've reduced our revenues by 5.5, revenue estimates by $5.5 million. What that means is, from where we thought we would be when we were estimating revenues prior to the pandemic to today, we've reduced that revenue estimate by $5.5 million. Now, the truth is, we may lose more revenue than that. We may even lose much more revenue than that. And so I want to speak directly to that question. What happens if we do lose? We've assumed we'll lose in the coming year compared to what we thought we'd have. And I want to start by saying, just shining a big bright light on the fact that that $5.5 million reduction is not our best estimate of what we think will happen. It's really the minimum loss that we think we should expect or plan for. There's really no way to estimate with confidence how much revenue we're going to collect in the coming year. Again, I thought it was very important to build some amount of revenue reduction in there, and I thought that this revenue reduction, which is about 1% of total revenues and total budget, is really the minimum we could responsibly build in there. And it was an amount that I thought we could deal with without causing real harm to our service delivery and to city operations. Now, if we do lose a lot more revenue than that, we're going to face some very tough choices, and we're going to have to deal with that challenge the same, again, the same way we did in the midst of our fiscal crisis a few years ago. We'll do it honestly and transparently, and we'll stay focused on long-term sustainability and trying to make sure that we get through whatever challenges come our way without doing any harm to the city's long-term fiscal strength. To talk a little bit about why there is so much uncertainty, I just wanted to highlight what has changed or what might change because of COVID-19 and the coronavirus pandemic. You know, the two biggest sources of revenue for the City of Hartford are our local property tax collections and revenue from the State of Connecticut. As you know well, many of our residents, many of our businesses are suffering enormous economic hardship during this pandemic. We're facing unprecedented job losses. Our small businesses have been devastated. Landlords may not be collecting rent. And while we hope that our revenues will stay strong, and we strongly encourage anybody who has that ability to pay to pay because we don't want them to fall behind, we have to be prepared for the possibility that we may collect less in property taxes in this coming year. The other big source of uncertainty is that the State of Connecticut is estimating about a $2.3 billion deficit for the coming fiscal year. Now, the state has a fairly large rainy day fund. We hope that the state budget will not, state funding for municipalities will not be cut, but we have to acknowledge the uncertainty there as well. And then, on the other side, the possibility for relief remains uncertain. Congress is right now debating the possibility of fiscal relief for states and cities. There are differing opinions on that, and I don't think any of us can predict right now what the outcome of that debate will be, or whether it will in any way produce relief for the City of Hartford. So we have to, again, acknowledge those sources of uncertainty, acknowledge the vulnerability and the possibility that we'll have to come together and make some significant adjustments and some big decisions, knowing that there are no easy decisions available to us. With that introduction, although I want to shift just to a little bit more, I'm sorry, this slide just illustrates a little bit more that point I just made about the two main sources of revenue. As you can see, overwhelming shares of our revenue come from general property taxes at almost exactly 50%, and intergovernmental rental revenue, primarily state funding, at about 45.5%. The other sources of revenue, charges, permit fees, licenses, reimbursements, fines, make up altogether less than 5% of the city budget. As I said at the start, the overall budget is 1% lower than last year. So we expect to spend this year and take in and spend $567.8 million. So the revenues match the expenditures at 500 High-level summary of the revenues, and I'll highlight a couple of the places where we made some adjustments. First, again, largest share of revenues is our local property taxes. That amount is down by $1.6 million prior to the budget last year. The primary reason for that is tax appeals that we have had over the past year. It's important to just remind everybody that our last three years. So we can't really play with that tax collection rate. That is prescribed to us, but we do anticipate a little bit lower revenue from taxes this year than last year. And again, there's a possibility for much greater loss than that. On licenses and permits, I want to just flag that although the revenue's up a little bit versus last year, it's down from what we thought it would be. There's quite a bit of construction activity happening and planned, and our estimate for permit activity and licenses was higher a couple of months ago than it is now. So that number has been reduced over the last couple of months, even though it's still up slightly versus last year. Very low interest rates and the challenging market environment. So we don't anticipate earning as much interest on the ones that we have. Intergovernmental revenue is down by about $1 million, and that's primarily because old reimbursement from some old-school projects has run its course, and so there's a small reduction there. But again, highlighting that vulnerability I mentioned earlier, we don't know for sure what will happen with the state budget in the year ahead. Other financing sources down at the bottom is the other place where there's a significant change, and that's down by about $1.6 million from last year. But again, down even more than that when you compare it with what we thought we would be getting just The two big sources of the reduction here are parking authority. Obviously, as there's less economic activity, less traffic, fewer large events, that revenue is going to be down pretty dramatically. And since Dunkin' Donuts Stadium is not operating, there is revenue sharing that we're not going to be getting from that stadium over the course of the coming year. So those are some places where we've seen reductions and brought it down. But again, I know I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I just think it's important to say that that $5.5 million reduction is probably the minimum we should anticipate. On the expense side, our largest expense line 8%. As you know, most of our workforce has gone a number of years without pay increases, without raises, and that is still true here. The reason that payroll reduced the share of the positions that they hold. So we have some positions shifting from grant funding to general fund, which increases the overall size of our payroll. But still, relative to a lot of municipalities, that's still by a pretty modest amount, 1.3%. You'll see that our benefits are down by about 0.4%. That is a reflection of the savings initiatives that I talked about earlier. Debt and other capital expenses, the reduction there of $4.6 million, that reflects the reduction I talked about earlier in our investment in capital this year, our infrastructure investment, our capital investment this year. We've brought that down by $4.5 million compared with last year. Again, I believe we can still maintain a necessary lean, modest capital improvement program, but that's one of the places that we can reduce without damaging critical services. We have this year, as we have in past years, kept the library at its existing service level. That means that the cost goes up by about 1.5% because they have some increases like any organization, whether it's utilities or healthcare costs that go up. But that is designed to maintain the library's service level. Other big categories and utilities, there's a rise in cost, and that's primarily driven by MDC cost as well as MIRA or trash disposal cost. As you know, both of those have gone up. They're offset a little bit by reductions in fuel prices and some energy efficiency measures that we've taken. So as a whole, there are some utilities that go up and some that go down, but overall, we are seeing a little bit of a cost increase there. In the other non-personnel category, there's, we tried to trim here as well. There's a reduction in outside council expenses in our legal department, reduction in our supplies, our line for supplies, reductions in vehicles and leases, and reduction in contingency. Again, that is just trying to find places where we can help make up for that reduction in revenue. On education, we continue to fully fund our NBR, our contribution to the school system, and we, of course, continue to pass through every dollar that we get for education from the state. Similar rundown, but in a pie chart form, this just gives you a sense of how the budget expenditures break down. Again, biggest category is payroll, about 40%, roughly $112 million. After that, it's pensions and cash outs, and then benefits and insurance, which combined are large category expenditure. And then you can see the others broken down here. The debt service that's reflected here, the 4.8, is the debt service that the city continues to pay on the baseball park, the downtown north Dunkin' Donuts Stadium, and the other areas here we just reviewed. I wanted to highlight this one. This is a breakdown of our payroll expenditures. And as you can see, the overwhelming share of our payroll is in public safety. That's police, fire, and ES&amp;T for a total of 72% of our municipal payroll. I think that's a reflection of a couple of things. One, the important need to focus on public safety of our community, but also the fact that we have run pretty lean and continue to run pretty lean. So with 72% of our budget going to public safety, we have 11% of our budget that goes to public works, and all other payroll is 17%. Again, a reflection of the work that we've done over the past few years to try to be as lean as possible, which is as important as ever, given what we face today. Is it just to put our education contribution in context? On the left, you see the same chart that you just saw before, which is our payroll with public safety at about $80 million. And just to compare with our education contribution from City General Fund, from city tax collection, it's a $96 million education contribution. On the benefits and insurance line, you can see a breakdown here. The overall very significant expense. The workers' compensation and then other insurances, property liability and other insurances are each in the neighborhood of $5 million or around 10% each of this line. On pension funding, I think it's important to highlight that this recommended budget fully funds our pension obligation. That's the ADEC or the actuarial determined employer contribution. It's what the actuaries have determined that we need to contribute to meet that target of bringing our assets in line with our liabilities over the long term. The return assumption, meaning the market return that we think the pension funds are going to get over the long term, is now 7.25. And I highlight that because it's down from what it has been in past years. We've worked together, myself with council and with the city treasurer and the Pension Commission, to responsibly decrease that assumption. And obviously, given what the markets are going through right now and the uncertainty we face, we may have a couple of tough years, and that may this recommended budget fully funds that pension obligation, as we have always tried to do. The capital improvement program, again, as I mentioned before, makes capital investments without approximately $30 million. That's the roughly $6.5 million of new general fund money that we put into it, along with draws funding and grant reimbursements. The most significant line items in our capital budget are education-related, and in particular this year, it's the city's share of the Martin Luther King School renovations, as well as the Board of Ed's administrative space at Buckley. We have worked together to get the Board of Ed prepared to move out of a lease so we don't have to be paying money in them into a city facility, but that requires some investment. And then, of course, the funding of infrastructure projects that we think are critical. Some examples of the kind of capital improvements that we think are critical include our streets and infrastructure. And we're continuing to try to keep pace with our pavement maintenance plan. We put some significant investment last year into roads. We know our roads are long overdue for investment, and we're trying to keep up with that. School buildings, as I mentioned, city buildings, particularly focused on security and life safety needs, as well as accessibility investments that are necessary. Levees, continuing to try to make those year-by-year incremental investments to maintain and upgrade our system, our flood control system, and keep on track with the plan that we worked together with the Army Corps of Engineers over the last few years. Public safety structures and equipment. And then, our capital investment, consistent with the draft city plan, also puts some investment into parks, trees, and bike pedestrian infrastructure. Not nearly as much as I would like to, not nearly as much as we'd all like to, but some significant investment, given the context and what we face today. I just got a note that the Hartford Public Access online stream working on it, but I'm very sorry to hear that and sorry for anybody who's watching and is frustrated by that. I hope that at minimum the video will go up and everybody will be able to see it without interruption later on. I just wanted to apologize and let you know that they are working on that. That's the end of the formal presentation, and I look forward to the public comment. But begging forgiveness from council and council president, there are just a couple of messages I wanted to take the chance to share, even though they are not strictly budget-related. Oh, this first one, you could argue, is. It's about the census. I really want to take the chance, anytime I get to talk to anybody in our community right now, to urge you to fill out the census form and to get all your neighbors to fill out the census form and your family to fill out the census form. It really has an impact on how much support, how much funding we get from the federal government and sometimes even from the state government. So if there's, if you want to know what you can do right now is to fill out that census form. And you can do it at my20 forms in the mail. They had a code there. You don't need that. Just go to my2020census.gov and fill it out. It really is so important for our community, and it's one of the most important things that you can do. Second thing, I wanted to let you know that our budget docs, including this presentation, but other budget documents, the full detail on our city recommended budget proposal is available at our website, Hartford.gov. Please feel free to go there and look in detail at every aspect of the city budget. And I also, since we're on that subject of websites, I just wanted to let you know that we are right now testing a new city website. And so I encourage you to, if you go to Hartford.gov and you click the link for our test website, our beta website, I really encourage you to check it out because we want your feedback. This process right now of having this budget hearing is one way of communicating with the public, but of course, our website is one of the most important ways that we can communicate every day, and we really want your feedback on how we can do that better and whether this new website design meets your needs, whether there are things you think we can do better, changes we should make. So I encourage you to look at the detailed budget and also encourage you to check out the new test website and give your feedback. Council President, Portiacomic Council, thank you very much for the opportunity to present the recommended budget, and I look forward to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Bronin. Again, apologies for the live stream. I was just informed that Hartford Public Access is having problems live streaming with Comcast. But once this hearing is over, it will be uploaded to YouTube, and rest assured that there will be no interruptions. I want to take the time right now to introduce our council members that are here joining us and other members of the panel. We have with us Councilman James Sanchez, Councilman Josh Mishdom, Councilman John Gale, Councilwoman Marilyn Rosetti, Councilman Nick LeBron, Councilwoman Shirley Surgeon, Majority Leader TJ Clark, Councilwoman Wildalise Bermudez. We also have our city treasurer, Adam Cloud. Good evening, Treasurer. Have I missed someone? We also have with us our deputy treasurer, Carmen Sierra. Thank you, everyone. We are now going to move on to the public comment portion of this hearing. As a reminder, every member of the community will be given three minutes to speak. Councilman John Gale will be the official timekeeper, and I ask that your name and your address. If you're a business owner, please share that information with us.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have the list of individuals for to I don't have the list of individuals for to The first on the list is David or somebody else on the call?
Elizabeth Peterson is here. I don't know what number I am in the queue.
That's okay. Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Good to hear from you. And the rest of the council and treasurer.
So I'm on?
Yes, ma'am, you are on.
Okay, okay, sorry. Thank you, sir. This is Alyssa Peterson, Grandview Terrace. Thank you for continuing to make efforts to keep city governance transparent and his staff's perpetual attempts to call you a policymaking body. You're an executive board, similar to a corporate board, with executive oversight power. To that end, you must oversee this mayor and his administration and for the next several weeks, focus on the budget presented to you. Because of the MAR board and our tier-three status, the city of Hartford is in a coast mode. As long as we keep things at the same rate or level, there's not much we can screw up as a city. Oh gee, okay. What you can do, however, is focus on the tweaks necessary in this budget. I'm personally uncomfortable with how much power has been consolidated under the chief operating officer position. I believe it's been turned into a city manager position. That's not a form of government. I like during this time after the pandemic for our mayor and our city council to focus on Hartford and what's needed in Hartford, not what's needed in Washington or elsewhere. The following budget items are of interest to me and I hope are of interest to you. The mayor's budget has created two positions for sustainability. I'd like to see those positions that were grant-funded eliminated, and I'd like to see them added to the grants department. So many of our health and youth programs could be increased and the number of Hartford residents and children served could be exponential if we increased our receipt of grant funds. Includes greatly expanding healthcare awareness among our poorer residents and homeless. And with the recent pandemic shed a light on the better, the need for healthcare amongst our minority residents. I'd also like to include money for health code enforcement. For years, our public health department has been unable to better scrutinize food establishment, bodegas, mini-marts, food trucks, nail shops, barber shops. Perhaps now with a pandemic upon us, the city council can redirect salary funds for additional oversight. Along the needs of enforcement, I'd like to see development services eliminate extraneous position hiring and focus on zoning enforcement. We really can't attract companies if our city looks terrible. Downtown is the shiny apple while the can't tell where one used car lot ends and another begins. I'd like to bring back the attractiveness of our urban business areas and neighborhoods with a focus on enforcement of zoning, food trucks, signage, and elimination of junk cars and parking on front lawns and in front of buildings. Electronic oversight from added cameras and drones to the C-4 operation. I think we've all enjoyed hearing or seeing less crime, less gunshots, less killing, less drug overdoses and drug sales. And I think greater electronic oversight could achieve this same element in public safety. Only address the growth of crack versus supporting our Board of Ed. It's time to refocus on our neighborhood schools and what our neighborhood schools can provide for our students. I greatly appreciate this opportunity to address you. Thank you.
The council and the mayor regarding the mayor's recommended budget. Everyone has three minutes to address us. And when you address us, please state your name and your address and also the organization that you're representing. We have Leader Ramos. Is Leader Ramos on the phone? I'm sorry. Or you have three minutes?
Mi nombre es Leida Ramos. Vivo en South Side de Hartford, Connecticut. Soy una ex trabajadora
Interrupt here. Should one of us interpret perhaps? I'm happy to do it.
Councilman, if you can just wait for her to get her statement and interpret after she gets done.
But I can't interpret three minutes. I'm gonna have to ask her to pause and I can jump in. I can't remember all.
I can say in English.
Okay, that would be great.
Better.
My name is Leida Ramos. I live in Hartford, in the south side of Hartford, Connecticut. I used to work for Make the Road, Connecticut, and I'm still a member of Make the Road, Connecticut. And firsthand, I seen on myself with the work and with our community that the need for this fund is very important for our immigrant community and families. I support this, the fund for the families and deportation because I want to help my community and my organization. I want to make a change in my community. And I noticed that there didn't been a lot of funds because only I had worked for like two weeks doing the applications for the families. Thank you very much, Beth.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ramos. Just a reminder to everyone who has called in that wants to participate in the public comment, please mute your phone. We would be appreciative if you just mute your phone so that you can drown out the background noise. So with that being said, I would like to call Stefan Keller. Stefan Keller, are you on the phone? Oh, before Stefan Keller speaks, yes, Councilwoman Bermudas.
I just wanted to make a statement in Spanish for those who are Spanish speakers. So para aquellas personas que necesitan traducción en español, nosotros podemos traducir mientras que usted da su testimonio. So no hay ningún problema si desea dar su testimonio en español.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Stefan Keller, Stefan Keller, are you on the phone?
I'm here.
You have three minutes.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, so my name is Stefan Keller. I live on Beacon Street in the West End. And thank you for the opportunity to speak and for holding this public forum for us. So I'm just calling families for deportation. I'm a member of Hartford Deportation Defense, and I work for Connecticut Students for a Dream. And I've really seen the importance of this fund and what it can do to support the families that live in Hartford. This past year, as many of you know, we had thirty thousand that we're able to distribute to families, which we went through in less than two months because there is, there are in the community. I just want to speak briefly about one specific young person we had the opportunity to work with who couldn't be on the call tonight, but allowed me to kind of share a little bit about what their experience was. So they were someone that was released from detention a couple months ago and really had nowhere to stay, right? Because they had been in detention, they had nowhere specific to live. They like couch surfing from couch to couch and really didn't have a lot of access to resources. And we were able to apply to the fund through the city. And we're going to be using that money to support them with housing. Like, as many of you can imagine, especially in this times of the pandemic, right? Housing is something that's very difficult to access and it's needed for anything else you need to do, right? Whether it be like trying to get a job, having a permanent address. So these funds have been really important to families to be able to thing, pay for a lawyer. It's very expensive to fight a deportation case. So these funds have been really, really crucial, right? It's something I think that was really great for the city to do, like a novel approach that, like, we're a statewide organization, C4D, and we're like trying to work with other cities to make that happen. And it's great that Hartford's been able to do that because it sets an example for other places around Connecticut where there's a lot of need there too, this kind of funding. So in conclusion, I just hope that this is put back in the budget for next year and that there's even like a exploration of whether more funds would be available. So it does go a really long way, like thirty thousand at the grand scheme of things doesn't sound like a lot, but even a little bit more could help even more families through the difficult process of facing deportation or detention. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Next on the list is Vanessa Villar. Vanessa Villar, are you on the phone?
Hi, yes, I am. Hello?
And you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Vanessa Villar, Hartford resident for Intervall Health as an immigration and domestic violence advocate. So I also just want to reiterate what a couple comments have already said about supporting the Hartford families facing deportation fund. In my field of work, I work a lot with victims of domestic violence who have that intersection of immigration. And unfortunately, a hard thing that I have to see is that their immigration status has a heavier weight than the abuse. It's something that is so detrimental to even kind of verbalize because we live in just the political climate where your immigration status here has such a heavy hold that it can impact your entire life and well-being. And so, yeah, again, I just want to reiterate that for women, not in that position, but just people that have complete families here and have to face something as scary as deportation, I think that funds are obviously necessary, need to continue, and just need to be supported, especially in a city like Hartford that's heavily immigrated populated, oh, sorry, immigration population. And, you know, people that live in actual fear, people that are afraid to talk about their experiences, people are afraid to reach out to resources, people that are just unaware of resources, I think that advocating for them and spreading that knowledge and continuing the funds and support is absolutely necessary. Thank you for your time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Vanessa. Next is Sarah Enon. And before Sarah addresses the council, just to remind everyone who has called in, if you can please do your level best to mute your phones that will so that we can drown out all the noise. Sarah, are you on the phone?
I am. Good evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sarah.
I live on Hamilton Street. Great, thank you. Yeah, my name's Sarah. I live on Hamilton Street. Thanks so much for the opportunity to testify tonight, even in these pretty bizarre circumstances that in favor of continuing and expanding the Hartford Families Facing Deportation Fund. One of the things I'm proudest about as a Hartford resident is how diverse our community is and our city is and that we value all our community members the atrocities that have been carried out by the current Republican administration in Washington has really only intensified with this COVID-19 pandemic that we're in is undocumented. It's been left behind and in fact, in a lot of cases purposely excluded by the federal release packages. And in that case, Hartford must step up to protect our immigrant communities. One of the ways that we can do this is expanding the Hartford Families Facing Deportation Fund to provide our neighbors with the resources to fight back within the legal system. Always this is true, but particularly during a pandemic, the ICE detention and deportation system has been humane. And as many folks and our neighbors face perhaps months of unemployment and changed expenses from this pandemic, the fund is going to become even more important to them, as others have already testified. In just two months of operation, the fund had already allocated the entire yearly budget, leaving many families on the waitlist to help with crucial services like court and application fees, legal representation and lawyer fees, transportation to court and childcare coverage. With the pandemic, I imagine that these needs are only going to increase for families that are facing deportation cases. And since immigrants with legal representation are much more likely to establish a right to stay here in the United States, these funds will directly benefit members of our community and allow them to remain here with their families. In conclusion, there's an urgent need for our city's budget to include and to expand the Hartford Families Facing Deportation Fund. Thank you for your time and attention this evening and for all your work during this crisis, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. At this time, we are not asking questions. We are just listening to the public. So thank you. On the list is if you can just mute your phones, that would be great. Hi, is it Yanni? Hi, Yanni there?
Hello, can you hear me?
I see.
Hello?
Hi, I hear you.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear.
Yes, you have the phone. You have the phone. Calling about a couple of things. It's really important for the city to put funding into zoning enforcers. And the reason why I'm saying, you know, I've watched so many things happening in our city right now that I'm saying, how can one person address all the issues? As you said, there's more people now having room in house, more cars are parking in the streets, I mean, on their lawn. There's so many things. There's people are opening up car places that's not even registered in the city. There is so much needs to be done, but we do have to have someone on the ground to do these works, okay? It's really critical for the city to hire more people on the ground. Not anymore, no more directors or assistants to the assistants. We need workers, and that's really important. The second one is development service. We need people on the ground to go out and do these inspections because most of these houses that have room and people in it, because no one in the city is inspecting these places and they're getting away with it. The fire that's happening because no one is inspecting it from the city. I'm hoping that we will put a little more effort in those kind of things. The quality of life is going out of control in the city, okay? It's really important for us to make sure we address that. And also, want to make sure we do a little more for the senior centers. You know, we have staff that hasn't even gotten a raise in twelve, thirteen years. And I understand we have budget problem, but I think, you know, spending is out of control when it comes, medication, medical is out of control. And these staffs, they are not really getting anything to help them get better. So I'm hoping that we can find a little more money to put in senior in the health department. Maybe there must be some grants that we can write to get, you know, we need more grant writers. Maybe that's what we need to get all these dollars out here. So I just want to let you know that those are some of our concern in the neighborhood, the enforcers. We need enforcers. We don't need any more directors. We need people on the ground to do the job, okay? And those are some of my things. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Yanni. Next on the list is Stephanie Rios. Is Stephanie Rios?
Yeah, hello, I'm here. Hello, everyone. My name is Stephanie Rios. I'm a part of C4D, Connecticut. I'm a part of C4D Community Control.
Stephanie, if you're on the
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, and before you just talk, if I can just mode, if you can just mute your phones, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Yen.
Okay. Okay. Can I continue talking?
Yes, you may.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, before I start, I have to say the address where I live. I live in Sandish Street, Hartford, Connecticut, it's 10,000. Thank you. Yeah, what I say, it was in Hartford and all the community people matters and no people matters. I know it's a huge community in Hartford who are scared to face deportation at any moment in their life. And the community people are here to support their families, to support their families for the reason they work and they come here to give an opportunity to the child. They can't get deportation for any reason. Then the foundation, Hartford Families Facing Foundation is here to help and support their family and with food, with rent, lawyer, or anything that they need or they want. Deportation process is a really long and hard process for people who are facing deportation right now. They need help from somebody and we are here for help and support. Thank you very much for your attention and for giving the opportunity to talk. Anybody have questions right now?
Well, thank you, Stephanie, for your testimony. At this time, we are not asking questions. We are just listening from the public. Well, thank you very much. Last Thank you so much. Last on our list is Leslie. Leslie, are you on the phone? Leslie on the phone? One more time, is Leslie on the phone? Right, that concludes the list of the public addressing the council. And then you have the time back over to you. Well, thank you, Stephanie, for your testimony. At this time, we are not asking questions. We are just
Hello? Hello, Mr. Clark?
Thank you. And again, I want to apologize for the technical difficulties that we are experiencing. Thank you to everyone for your input. We will take all that was shared into consideration while delivering changes. I would now like to offer a few members of our panel the opportunity to address the city, starting with our mayor. Mayor Lou Bronin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to all the members of the public who provided comment. And thank you to all who watched. And again, I want to encourage everybody to participate in this process in every way you can, including feel free to dig into the details of the budget proposal, which are on the website at hartford.gov. I just wanted to say a few words to everybody about the time that we're in. We are truly in an unprecedented time and it is a challenging and difficult time for everybody. It's been devastating to small businesses. It's been difficult for families. We as a city are trying our best to respond both to the public health crisis and to provide assistance and support our families throughout the city in every way we can. I, one of the things that I wanted to take the opportunity to share is that even as we begin to talk about moving past the peak of this virus, we are still in a very dangerous time. And although remote meetings like this are very difficult, and I'm sure we're all frustrated by the process and by how hard it is to make the technology work right and facilitate real conversation, staying our community die from this virus. We've had well over 1,000 who we know have gotten it, but the reality is that many, many more have. And one of the things that's going to be important as we move ahead is continuing to take those basic precautions and continuing to ask of one another that we respect the social distancing requirements and keep each other safe, even as we begin to open up. So please keep your distance, wash your hands, wear a mask. It's not about you, it's about everybody else. And the other thing that's going to be important is there are now more tests available than we have people seeking tests. Not because we have enough tests, but because not enough people are looking for testing right now. And I think that's because people still think that you have to have bad symptoms or you have to have had an known exposure or you have to be very vulnerable to it. That's not true anymore. So if you think you need to get a test, please seek out a test. The easiest way to do it right now is through Hartford Hospital. And I'm going to give you that hotline. It's 860-972-8100. I know that's not about the budget, but it is about the strength and safety of our community. So I hope you don't mind my taking a minute just to talk about that. Just one last closing comment on the budget. We've all been through some challenging years over the past few years. We've done it together. We've done it directly. We've done it through difficult times. We've made tough decisions. This is not where we hoped to be this year, but it's where we are. And we have to continue to meet this challenge with the same focus on long-term strength of our city and supporting our most vulnerable residents and delivering the basic fundamental services that our community deserves. That's what this budget seeks to do, and I look forward to working to finalize it with the city council in the weeks ahead. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe, stay healthy, and God bless.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just informed from Councilman Mixdom that there are two participants on the line that wish to address this floor.
At least two. I just received text from two, but I think there may be more.
Is there anyone on the line that wishes to address Council or the mayor regarding the budget?
Yes.
Okay. Could you say your name?
Yeah, my name is Shanique Reed.
With the city council in the weeks ahead.
Can you hear me? Yes. You have the floor. Can you please say your name and address, please? From Councilman Mixdom that there are two participants.
Okay, my name is Shanique Reed. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay. So hello, city council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Shanique Reed. I live in the Blue Hills neighborhood of Hartford. And I'm urging your support to increase Families Facing Deportation Fund. Hartford is only as strong as the communities that have built it and to continue to create the culture that so many love. Therefore, we must stand with our entire city. Working within the Hartford Deportation Defense, myself, I've helped in fighting against the permanent separation of individuals from their loved ones, their livelihoods in their communities, against deportation. And it's clear with our current administration that completely and purposefully disregard our immigrant community members that we have to, as a community, stand up for them. They exclude them so much that even in the point of a crisis and a pandemic, a point where everyone globally is, needs resources, that they're still left out. So it's up to you, our local officials, to provide the resources that our folks most desperately need. Expanding the funding up to $100,000 will not only be able to fully cover up most of the legal but then it can also open it up to receive even more funding from organizations like the Vera Fund, which is willing to match
Council members, my name is Vicki Gallant-Clark. I am a resident of Hartford. I live on Granby Street and also with the Blue Hills Civic Association, also known as Building Hartford Through Community Act. I have three primary questions as opposed to comments as a result of reviewing the fiscal year 2021 recommended budget. I see that in 2019, the capital improvement was higher, much higher than it is recommended for 2020 and on through fiscal year 2022. My question is, what kind of impact will this decrease in capital improvement have specifically on the neighborhood? So that's question number one. The second question is, the Metro Hartford Innovation Services seems to be able to be shared by Hartford Public Library, the Hartford Parking Authority, City of Hartford, and the Hartford Public Schools. From reading the significant features, it looks like the City of Hartford and the Hartford Public Schools share the expense of the Metro Hartford Innovation Services. My question is, what is the contribution or why isn't the Hartford Public Library and the Hartford Parking Authority sharing in the cost of the Metro Hartford Innovation Services? My last question is, currently, it looks like there's about 41% of residents that hold City of Hartford jobs. My question is, what will be done to increase the percentage of residents as far as being able to obtain City of Hartford jobs? So those are my three main questions. Excuse me, I would love for somebody to be able to get back to me and give me some feedback so I can share with residents as well. Thank you so much. Stay well and be healthy.
Thank you for those questions. They're great questions. And I will have someone reach out from my office and make sure that you get those answers. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else on the
Really appreciate it.
Thank you. That wishes to address council? Great, that closes our public comment section. And now we're back on the floor. Any other council members that would like to address the public briefly? Councilman James Sanchez, you have the floor.
Yes, do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank our community for participating in tonight's WebEx. And I also want to congratulate the mayor for his wisdom in avoiding the easy budgetary solutions of so many of his predecessors who mistakenly, you know, resolved budget problems on the backs of our most critical city employees. Now, these are the members of the Hartford Police Department, the Fire Department, and Public Works Department. At a time when these individuals are more critical than ever to the health and safety of our community. The mayor and this council is committed to keeping faith with our frontline workers. So, you know, I serve this country in uniform and therefore I understand the idea of selfless service. And I see those qualities in our police, fire, and DPW workers. I want our citizens to know that this council and the administration we serve serve you with this same level of dedication. And, you know, I just want to thank everyone for what they're doing, our frontline workers, for their commitment. And please keep up the good work. And it is a challenging time and we will make sure that this budget works for our community. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rosetti.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have not done this in a long time. I haven't done this in 20 years and I certainly never thought I'd be doing it this way. So I want to thank everyone. I also want to thank all the people who put all the work into the budget. I know this budget is only good as all the department heads, the staff, and all the city staff. And as my colleague said, you know, really want to thank all the city employees, but particularly Public Works, Fire, and Police. But I really want to do a shout out to the sanitation workers because I see them. They came by my house yesterday. I have yelled out to them a couple of times, but I also don't want them to think I'm the crazy lady over on Freeman Street. But we need to be mindful. I am starting to see gloves and masks on the side of the road. I think we need to be mindful of where those go. So really, can we give a virtual applause to these essential workers and the sanitation workers? Because really, this is going to continue for some time and so also I just want to quickly say, as the Chair of Public Works Parks Recreation and the Environment, really, we need to figure out, and I know the mayor is going to have some task forces on how we start to reopen, but I really want to think about how we safely and open the parks, open the park space. It's really needed for people to recreate. I think it was nice enough that the golf courses, which are only available to certain people, were open during this time. But we really need to think about the young men, women, children, and families in the city who are going to need places to recreate and have had really limited, if not anywhere to go, as we all have. But let's really, really figure out how we systematically bring these spaces back. I think that's really, really important. And again, just as my colleagues, I'm going to work on this budget as I would in anything in my life. And I think we really worked to rise to the occasion during these trying times. And, you know, even though every day brings us a different challenge and things are different, in some ways, they still are the same. And I know that, I know that my colleagues truly work. You know, I've watched what people have been doing in these last few months in their different ways. Every single person on the council has added to or tried to help the city in a way that they have an expertise on. So I really look forward to doing this, our continued work and commitment from all of you. And I just wanted to say thank you to everyone and be safe.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rosetti. Councilman LeBron?
Thank you. So good evening to everyone who's watching live streaming and good evening to everyone in the city of Hartford. I'd like to take a moment to thank you all for your resilience during these unprecedented times. I have seen people from different backgrounds come together to support others in need. All of your heroic efforts is what keeps Hartford alive and moving forward towards the bright pathways ahead. My office and all of my colleagues echoing what Councilwoman Rosetti said, I've been working diligently to keep our residents informed about the various resources available. As we concentrate on the budget, you can expect that I and all of the council members will be engaged in the process to the best of our abilities to keep the city moving forward. We can't let this virtual norm that we're not used to become a barrier. We need to embrace it, get familiar with it, and overcome it as a whole. COVID-19 will have a physical impact on how we work, how we play, and how we congregate. We should expect some economic ripple effects down the road. However, I'm confident that the mayor's office and the Court of Common Council will work towards achieving the same common goal, keeping Hartford moving forward both responsibly and in the best interest for the people at the forefront. As I've always said since this pandemic, As I've always said, since this pandemic, continue to be hopeful during this health pandemic. We will get through it, and thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Councilman LeBron. Councilman Gale?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the presentation. And I, I would like to second, uh, all the comments of my colleagues that they've made. Uh, and I would just like to add by giving a shout out to our teachers. Uh, this is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we know that, uh, uh, this has been a very trying times, trying to continue to educate our students from afar. Uh, so big shout out to all of the Hartford teachers. And, uh, in particular, today is School Nurse Day, and that's something that's actually fairly close to me, since my wife is a school nurse. So a shout out to all the school nurses out there. Uh, and, uh, lastly, uh, so that the public knows, uh, you can get ahold of any one of us, nine council members, as well as the mayor, uh, chief operating officer. All of our emails are our names at Hartford.gov. Maybe you can see that, there you go. John.Gale@Hartford.gov, and the same is true for everybody else. If you have any comments, please send them our way. Happy to hear from you.
I don't know if everyone can hear me.
Treasure Cloud, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you. Uh, first and foremost, uh, I want to thank the mayor for his cogent presentation. I applaud the efforts, um, of the presentation and the staff that generated it. I'd like to also thank, uh, Madam Council President, uh, as you take on this, uh, laborious responsibility along with your colleagues to, uh, assess the budget that's before you and make sure that in your thought process, you're thinking first and foremost about the residents of the City of Hartford and how that budget achieves our fundamental responsibility as, as the elected officials of the City of Hartford. I'd like to, uh, also second the notions made by many of, uh, of my colleagues as to our essential employees. The COVID-19 virus is unprecedented and has created significant challenges, not only as a healthcare matter, but as an economic matter. I think the mayor aptly suggested that small businesses are hurting. Um, I think that from my perspective as, uh, the custodian of city assets, but also as an integral part of the capital markets as an investor, uh, we're seeing, uh, some very alarming, uh, concerns related to the economy. And I... What we're seeing right now is the impact that COVID has because we're shut down and we're having to do Zoom meetings. But it's hurting the broader economy. And I think the lasting, uh, term of the COVID-19 is going to be a lot longer than when we reopen. I think what we're going to see is corporations struggling to make earnings. I think we're going to see a volatility in the marketplace well past May or June. And that negative impact, we'll have to track very closely as it impacts our community. And something that I'm focused on is, one, preserving the assets within the city, including the pension assets, so that we can pay the nearly three thousand retirees the benefits that they have earned. But most importantly, trying to manage in this volatile marketplace the ability to generate income on the budget that ultimately comes out, because we don't spend our budget on day one of the fiscal year. It gets approved, but it gets spent over that twelve-month period. And so one of the responsibilities we have is to try and earn interest on the cash that we don't spend. Um, we do that very well, but we have a low interest environment rate right now, which may impact the amount of revenue we can generate off of that cash. One of the other things I wanted to share, and I think it was Councilwoman, uh, Rosati that mentioned it, is access to our parks. The Treasurer's Office is responsible for the, the management of the Hartford Parks Trust Fund. And several years ago, the mayor and I agreed on releasing nearly twelve million dollars of improvements to our city parks. And just recently, in the past thirty days, working with the COO, I've approved, uh, four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars of improvements to various parks throughout the city. I would absolutely encourage Hartford residents to take advantage of our parks. They're some of the most beautiful in the country. And given the fact that, uh, we have this quarantine slash six feet, it's a great place to do it. But the improvement that we have to our parks should allow our residents to enjoy them to their fullest. And lastly, I would just say that from a fiscal perspective, right now, the City of Hartford is sitting on, uh, adequate cash to be able to pay our bills. And so when we get to June thirtieth, we will have sufficient cash to be able to meet our obligations, and my office will monitor that consistently. And lastly, I'd like to add, as I add every time I'm before my colleagues on the council, the Treasurer's Office serves as a resource. As the independently elected Office of Treasury, our role is to serve as a custodian of funds, but also to add any advice in council to the mayor and/or to the council relative to matters of fiscal concern to the residents of the City of Hartford. And I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Treasure Cloud. Is there anyone else that would like to address the, the public? Councilman Mixdom?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, two things. First, I want to second what, what my colleague said about all of our frontline folks who are helping out so much, firefighters, Public Works. I think we also need to recognize folks who we don't think of as frontline, but are, like the, the grocery store employees, because, man, it's, you go over to Stop and Shop, and they got the arrows in the aisles, and they got you waiting to go to the cashier, and it's chaos. And those folks are patient, and they're putting in work. And they also deserve our thanks, because they're keeping a lot of us fed. So those folks, the boligados, I was by Dunn's River the other day, and those people were working like crazy for a big line outside. So we should thank those people too. And I just need to mention, I know that Bianca Norones and Consonza Segoya are still waiting to speak. They were waiting, and I didn't hear them to answer you when you, you called out, but they said that they're still there. So we should see if we can get them up. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mixdom. Unfortunately, public comment ended. I reopened it again. Uh, but anyone who's still on the line, um, can, uh, send their questions to Council, and we'll be more than happy, um, to get back to them. Is there anyone else on the floor that would like to address, uh, the public? Thank you. I personally want to thank, uh, our mayor and his team. Um, first of all, for presenting the budget. Um, second, uh, applauding, uh, you and your staff for translating every press release and literature, um, to the Spanish-speaking residents of the City of Hartford. Um, I know that, um, I think this is probably the only city, um, that has taken on, um, that, and, um, from the Hispanic community, uh, we, uh, thank you. Also, I wanted to make the public aware that the budget is online at Hartford.gov and that every presentation from every department is also on there. Each council member can be emailed for any follow-up, questions from the community. Our contact information can also be found on our city website. A recording of this hearing will be made available on the Hartford Public Access and YouTube channel. Finally, I would like to say how, how much I appreciate, uh, everyone watching, everyone watching at home, and everyone who signed up to speak tonight. We are faced with challenging obstacles at times when many in our community are already, uh, struggling. Our prayers go out tonight to all of those who have been impacted by the virus. You don't have to go through this alone. Please email me or any one of my colleagues if you need assistance or any information or resources. And again, I'm opening up the floor for anyone who would like to address, any council members?
Hi, hello?
Good evening, everyone. Um, without any further more business to discuss, uh, this, uh, public comment is adjourned. Thank you, and have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.
Hi.
Good night. Leave the meeting. Why does it go? Leave, there it is.